I'll call this meeting to order on Tuesday, January 22, 2019. Want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have the pastor of the square located at 981 Pata Spring Street, Phil. And he and I had lunch together, and I'm gonna mess up his name because he doesn't have a Smith or Jones name. It's Man- Man Deneli. Man Deneli, that's close. He's gonna come forward and give us our invocation and also lead us in the pledge of flag. Please step forward. Everyone please rise.
Would you join me in prayer? Father, we just thank you for our city. God, I'm so grateful for where I live. And I just pray you continue to bless the city of Smyrna, that you give our mayor and our city council wisdom and discernment on how to lead our city, how to be faithful to our city, how to love people well, how to bring justice. And, God, so we just even ask tonight that you would be present, that you would be here, and that you would continue to move on behalf of our city and our people. And we just say thank you, in Jesus's name. Amen. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for those folks that are new to Smyrna or looking for a change, I'm sure the folks at the square at 981 Pata Spring Street, just right down the street, they'd be glad to have you. Agenda changes. We do not have any, although I understand one item may be tabled. Under the mayor's report, Georgia Millipps Association 2018 Safety and Liability Grant Presentation. Ms. Jones, you wanna tell us what that is and...
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to introduce Kay Love. She's the Municipal Operations Consultant with GMA, and she is here to do a check presentation. And joining her is going to be Kay Bolick, our HR Director. So I'll turn it over to you, Kay.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Bacon, members of council. It's great to be here tonight to present grant check funds in the amount of $20,000 to the city of Smyrna. The city received a $10,000 safety grant and a $10,000 liability grant towards the purchase of public safety equipment. And the items purchased were a multi-gas monitor, a roll-in rack hose roller, light tower vertical mast, vehicle magnetic phone mounts, and police car stop assist. And the Safety and Liability Grant program is made available to members of GMA's Property and Liability Insurance Program and the Workers Compensation Program. It is a non-matching grant with the primary goal to help cities purchase needed items in the areas of equipment, training, and services so that they can increase employee safety and decrease liability. The program began in 2000, and since that time, over 130 cities have leveraged the purchase of more than $2.6 million in eligible equipment and training. So I'm very happy to be here tonight. I have the big check. Kay has the most important check, which is the real check, and I'll let her make whatever comes to mind.
I'm gonna ask that Councilmember Marilyn Blackman, who chairs the Human Resources, and Ron Finley, who's our finance, let them get that because they both chair those committees, and they can get the big check that's not worth the papers written on, but... Or the cardboard. Yeah. Thank you for coming out and presenting that check, and it's nice to get money that we don't have to match funds, so thank you very much. Item four, land issue zoning and annexation, A 2018-511. Public hearing zoning request, Z 18, 019 rezoning from O.I. to T.S., conditional for the construction of a new hotel, 0199 acres, land lot 881, at 2875 Spring Hill Parkway, MCP III Real Estate Ms. Jones, the background, please.
MCP III Real Estate LLC is requesting to rezone the property at 2875 Spring Hill Parkway from office institutional to tourist services, conditional, for the development of a seven-story, 136-room hotel with structured parking. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing one-story office/warehouse building to construct the hotel over a two-story structured parking deck. The planning and zoning board heard the rezoning request at the December 10, 2018 meeting, and it was approved by vote of seven to zero. Community Development has reviewed the requested variances with respect to the design of the site and site constraints. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from O.I. to T.S., conditional for a proposed seven-story, 136-room hotel with conditions. And Rusty Martin, our senior planner, will be giving more information.
All right. Is the applicant here? Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to this rezoning request? Let the record show there is no opposition. I'll turn this over to Mr. Derek Norton, and I'm sure he'll want Mr. Rusty Martin to make a presentation.
Good evening. This request is for 2875 Spring Hill Parkway. It is lo- this property is located at basically the northwest side or northeast side of Spring Hill Parkway. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property from O.I. to tourist services, conditional, for the construction of a seven-story, 103,000-square-foot hotel, which accommodates basically 136 rooms. And as you can see on the zoning map above, the property's zoned O.I. The property to the immediate west is O.I., which is the Holiday Inn. The property to the south is the Hyatt Place, which is zoned tourist services. And then the properties to the north is the Emerson Center Office Park, which is zoned O.I. in Cobb County. The city's future land use map has this property designated as Regional Activity Center. All the surrounding properties in Smyrna have a Regional Activity Center, feature land use designation, as well as the properties in Cobb County have a Regional Activity Center designation in the Cobb County Comprehensive Plan as well. This is the proposed site plan. We'll walk through specific aspects of this design. This design has the hotel built on top of a two-story parking deck, so we'll work through the top level of that parking deck. The applicant is requesting the following minimum setbacks: a front setback of 31 feet, a side setback of five, and a rear of seven. And that is all basically the footprint of the parking deck. This is the location of the hotel building footprint. This site has a full access drive, so you can make a left or a right out onto Spring Hill Parkway at this location, but they will be limited to one. They are proposing the dumpster enclosure located on the eastern side of the property. And they're proposing 28 parking spaces on the top level. And this is just to highlight the ramp that takes you down to the second level or basement level of the deck. With this request, the applicant is requesting seven variances. The first deals with the setback reduction from 50 feet to 31 feet, the side setback reduction from 15 feet to five, a rear setback reduction from 50 to 7, landscaping in the parking area reduction from 10% to 5%, and a reduction in required parking from 170 spaces to 101. Next is an increase in building height from five stories to seven stories. And finally, the applicant is requesting variance with respect to wall signage. They're asking for a second wall sign and to increase the square footage of those wall signs from 40 feet to 125 square feet to address the scaling of the building in proportion to the signage allowed. This is the basement level of the parking deck, just to give you an idea of the layout and how it's accessed. And there's 73 parking spaces within that basement level. Here's the proposed building rendering. So this is your view from Spring Hill Parkway as you travel north towards Cumberland Boulevard. And then here, the actual building elevation's all the way around the building. This is the subject property. It's a small office building with some office or some warehouse space at the rear of the property. And then these are surrounding properties to give you some context of development in the area. Obviously, the top-left picture is the Holiday Inn Express. Top-right is the Hyatt Place, and the bottom picture is Emerson Center Office Park. Community Development is recommending approval of the rezoning from O.I. to tourist services, conditional, for the seven-story, 136-room hotel with the following conditions. Standards conditions from Section 1201 apply, which deal with the composition of the building, stormwater management, underground utilities, traffic improvements, and landscaping requirements. In addition to the standard conditions, we are applying special conditions. Number nine lays out the minimum setbacks for the site, which we've already gone over. Ten requires a developer to be responsible for any water and sanitary sewer improvements deemed necessary by the Public Works Director of Cobb County. Number 11 requires a developer to be responsible for any fire access improvements deemed necessary by the fire marshal. Twelve requires street trees along Spring Hill Parkway. Thirteen requires the dumpster location to be moved to the rear of the property. Fourteen, the development shall be limited to one access point on Spring Hill Parkway. Fifteen provides for the two wall signs with a maximum allowable sign area of 125 square feet per sign. Sixteen deals with trees during the development process. And seventeen ties the zoning of the property to the site plan submitted. And eighteen ties the development of the property, or the zoning of the property to the elevation submitted. Nineteen is a list of additional stipulations that's agreeable by the applicant. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions of Mr. Martin? All right. Applicant will step forward and...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Happy New Year. I don't know what the protocols are. How long are you supposed to say that? But I haven't seen you guys since last year, so Happy New Year. Be the last thing I'm gonna say.
We've gained a little weight, that's all.
That's all. For the record, my name's Garvis Sams, the law firm of Sams, Larkin, Huff &amp; Valley in Marietta, and I represent MCP III Real Estate LLC concerning this application for rezoning. Have my client, his architect, with us tonight so at the appropriate time we can respond to any questions or address any concerns that you may have. This was an application that was heard, considered, and unanimously recommended for approval by your planning commission back on December the 10th. Previous to that, about a week previous to that, we had submitted a stipulation letter, some of which incorporated stipulations and conditions, which Mr. Martin has talked about. And by the way, he did a good job teeing this up, so really, I'll try to be as brief as I can. Other of the stipulations are some that we imposed on ourselves based upon the stylized nature of this hotel, which you can see by the architectural renderings and elevations, extremely, extremely nice. I won't belabor the point, but let me tell you a little bit about my client. MCP III is Buckhead Hospitality America, consists of four principals, two of whom went to Cornell University and received their masters in hospitality and management. The other one has another 30 years, so between them, they've got 68 combined years of experience in the hotel business. This is what they do. So they've got a proven track record, and during the penance of the application, we shared with staff some of the other products, projects that they've been involved in throughout the southeastern United States and other parts of the country, as well as the metropolitan Atlanta area. This property is a small piece. It's .99 acres. There are site constraints because of that, because of topo and some other challenges. My client owns this property. It owns, manages, and operates the Holiday Inn Express next door. It will continue and will own, manage, and operate this hotel. They're not flippers. This, they're not speculators. This is part of their portfolio as a family-owned, managed, and run business. The interesting thing, at least to me, is historically, since you adopted the LCI back in, I think it was April of 2017, your staff has unflaggingly, and you have dutifully followed the mandates of the Liberal Centre's Initiative Study that you adopted, the LCI. We meet the criteria of the LCI in that this is within what's called a key development node under the LCI specifically. It's called the South Spring Key Development Area. So what we have proposed in terms of the hotel is entirely what is anticipated by your LCI, which we think is a challenge in some instances, but in this particular instance, it's just hand in glove and no one's forcing a set of circumstances that don't comply with the LCI. We submit the application on December the 9th. It moved quickly with the stipulation letter submitted on December the 4th. Submit the application November 9th, excuse me. Stipulation letter on December 4th, heard by your planning commission on the 10th. Since then, we've kept in touch with staff, continuing the dialogue we have with them with respect to tweaking certain issues, specifically with respect to signage. They have like a 63-page signage packet that we submitted to staff, not to confuse them or obfuscate what we needed or wanted, but just to give you, staff, the planning commission a flavor for really what's out there and what you're gonna be seeing. And I think Mr. Martin and Mr. Sutter have done a good job with the imagery that's a part of the package that you have before you tonight. If you look at the confluence of I-285 and Cobb Parkway, there's four quadrants. Of course, there's the $600 million project with the Braves with SunTrust and the Battery. You've got the Cobb Galleria, mixed-use development on the other quadrant, and then Cumberland Mall on that other quadrant. The remaining quadrant is primarily within the city of Smyrna, and it is a key. And I'm not saying this, this is not my policy. This is policy you've articulated in your staff. What they've done has comported with that. But this is gonna be a primary economic engine, all the way from Spring Hill Parkway on Spring going back down to Cobb Parkway on both sides of Spring, within the entirety of the corridor's LCI boundaries. This is gonna be a seven-story hotel, 103-plus-thousand square feet, 136 keys or rooms as they, rooms or keys, as they call it. This is a hotel component called Element. Element is a Marriott property or brand. Its targeted demographics are, for lack of a better characterization, double-income, traveling millennials. So it's kind of a boutique hotel, but it's upscale to the extent of the personnel or the traveling public that it is targeting. We have found that being involved in the day-to-day operations, in totality, the operations of this, it's made Marriott very comfortable. And so we own, my client owns a geographic area, and this is the area within which they've chosen to put the Element. The dumpster that, we are not really at variance with staff on the positioning of that. It's just a matter of revising the site plan to put that where staff would like it to be. Entrance signage has been articulated, denominated in your staff analysis and by stipulation letter. The variances we seek are due and owing to the configuration and the topography and other developmental constraints. Your staff has recommended approval on all of the variances. They're not reaches. They're not density grabs. They're simply trying to fit this within a very small tract of land in terms of what's needed for a hotel. The architecture is high-end. This has structured parking to it, which is important, two-tiered structured platform parking. But it also has a surface park component of it as well, which lends itself ultimately to interparcial access once Emerson, the Office Park, is developed, and I think you'll be seeing that hopefully in the near future. The hotel will provide a, this is important, because you can see we're underparked, but there's a good reason for that. Number one, space. Number two, historically, we really don't need all the parks or parking spaces. But we have a regularly scheduled shuttle service that goes to SunTrust, the Battery, Cumberland, the Galleria. We have a reciprocal easement agreement with the Holiday Inn Express next door, our own property, but it's actually gonna be a recorded REA, reciprocal easement agreement. We also are basing the parking on the historic nature of Uber and Lyft and the rideshare programs that are out there and greatly used. And even though no one knows about it or no one uses it, we plan to use the Cumberland Circular Route in conjunction with those other five or four components for transportation and traffic maneuverability and going to and from other parts of this regional activity center. We have agreed, everything your engineer, your public works directors respectively have asked for that. We have approval from your staff, from your planning commission. We meet all the requirements of the LCI, the future land use map, and Cobb County has expressed not only no opposition, but have endorsed this, at least literally in my speaking with Commissioner Rod and other members of the county staff and elected officials. So with that being said, Mr. Mayor, knowing you have another very long agenda tonight, that's all I have. We do ask that you follow your planning commission's recommendation.
Any questions, Mr. Sams? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I closely reviewed this plan and watched it as it's gone through the process. Rusty, thank you for the presentation you did. And as always, Mr. Sams has eloquently and thoroughly described all of the details. Believe it or not, I don't have any questions. Does this, anybody have any questions, if anybody?
At this point, I'll make a motion to approve item 4A, 2018-511, rezoning from O.I. to T.S., conditional for the construction of a new hotel, .99 acres, land lot 881, 2875 Spring Hill Parkway, MCP III Real Estate LLC.
I have a motion and a second to approve this zoning request. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0, and for the record, Councilmember Welch is out of town on business. He was hoping he could make it back in time, but I don't think he is. It's approved 6-1. Thank you very much. Item B, on the land issue zoning annexation, 2018-512, public hearing, zoning request, Z 18-017, rezoning from R-15 to O.I. for an office use, 0.88 acres, land lots 420, 894 Pat Mail Road. Melba Bush is the applicant, and Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Melba Bush is proposing to rezone the property at 894 Pat Mail Road from R-15 to Office Institutional for the continued use of the existing structure as an office building. The subject property was developed and used as a dentist's office operated by her now-retired husband, Dr. Bush. Due to the property being vacant for several years, the subject property has lost its legal non-conforming status and therefore requires rezoning to be used for office use. The rezoning request was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board at their December 10, 2018 meeting, and it was approved by a vote of seven to zero. Community Development recommends approval of the proposed rezoning from R-15 to O.I. for use as an office building with conditions.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this zoning request? One person, okay. It's my understanding that Ms. Wilkinson is gonna table this. Mr. Cochran, do we table it before? I don't see much sense in us having the discussion if we're gonna table it.
Yeah, if it's gonna be tabled, I guess the motion should be made to table it. Now, you can do it either way, but the most efficient way to do it would be to make the motion now and have that motion voted on. And then if the motion's granted, then it's tabled. If the motion is denied, then you have the hearing.
And if it's to table, then what we'll do is we'll set a, we'll set a date. It'll be table to a date, right?
Right.
Okay. Ms. Wilkinson, I'll turn it over.
I'm actually okay with moving forward with this and hearing from the applicant tonight. I have talked to them, and I think that I'm comfortable with moving forward with the additional stipulations that I've talked to them about, and so I'd like to go ahead and hear it.
Are you talking about the 14 stipulations that you showed the council at the pre-meeting? Well, no, I mean, I'm...
Are we gonna hear it?
You said upstairs you wanted to table it.
That's not what I said the last time, but I'm sorry.
If you're not gonna make a motion to table, then we'll ask the applicant to come forward and the person that was in opposition to be sworn in? Yeah, anybody that thinks they wanna speak or, I just wanna get everybody sworn in all at the same time. Even if I swear you in and you don't speak, then that's okay. You don't have to.
I did.
Okay, do we, Ms. Wilkinson, I'm sure you want, I assume you want staff to give a recommendation. Ms. Wilkinson, it's up to you.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, Rusty, would you like to go ahead and tell us about the property and...
This is a rezoning from R-15 to O.I. for use of the property as an office use. The subject property is located at 894 Pat Mail Road, which is just on the south side of Pat Mail, just west of the Fouts... Patmail, just west of the Fouts Brother property or the intersection with Atlanta Road and Patmail. The existing building on the site is a small A-frame, one-story office building. It's always been used as a dentist's office since, I believe, the early 1970s. And that was done in Cobb County. It was annexed into the city in the early 80s and has maintained the commercial use from the early 70s up to a few years ago when Mr. Bush retired. As you can see in the zoning vicinity map, the properties to the east, west, and south are zoned R15 on the south end, on the catty corner to the southeast. That's the Public Works property, and it's zoned general commercial. The properties across Patmail are zoned R20 in unincorporated Cobb County. The city's future land use map is, has this property designated as low-density residential. The surrounding properties are all low-density residential. There's no proposed land use change for this property. Here's a survey of the property as it stands, and I'll walk you through this site. This is the location of the building. It's right in the middle of the property. They have two one-way drives, so you'll come into the property on the eastern driveway and go down and around the building and exit on the western driveway. They have twelve existing parking spaces on this property to support the commercial These are pictures of the subject property. The top two pictures are of the building, the one on the left being from Patmail, the one on the right being from behind the building and the drive that goes around the building. And then the bottom two are pictures of the subject property from Wells Circle and then from that driveway towards Wells Circle. So you can see the vegetation along the Wells Circle side. Here are some pictures of the adjacent properties in the area to give you some context of what's going on. The top two are properties along Patmail, and the picture on the left is from Patmail, and then the picture on the bottom right is along Wells Circle. Community Development has reviewed this application and the request of rezoning from R15 to OI. We are recommending approval with the following conditions. First, vehicular access to and from Wells Circle shall be prohibited, which means there will be no future drive, driveway access that connects the property to Wells Circle. Number two, a 35-foot undisturbed buffer shall be maintained along Wells Circle. We're trying to maintain the existing vegetation along Wells Circle and maintain that to a depth of 35 feet, which is what the front yard setback would be for the R15 zoning district, which is the zoning that's on either side of the existing property. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Martin?
Mr. Martin, I have some questions. So I know, and we've talked about the office use that is the intention of the applicant to continue the use that's been there and under a non-conforming use for the future. But can you tell us other things that are allowed under OI category?
There's office uses, there's public uses, there's institutional uses like churches and schools. There's, let me see, assembly halls, ambulance service accessory to a hospital or funeral home, clinics, clubs and lodges, day nurseries, colleges, universities, cultural facilities, financial institutions, funeral homes, health clubs, hospitals, nursing homes and offices, and then parking lot, parking garage, office supply establishment, and public buildings, and then retail services, but those have to be accessory to an office building, which have to be accessed through a lobby so they wouldn't be applicable. And schools again, and research and experimental testing labs.
Okay.
In all, there's, from what the code says, there's 24 uses that are allowed on the property.
Okay, thank you. I was thinking on one of those that I saw was also a printing company. Is that a printing business? Is that allowed as well under OI? Anyway, I thought I saw that.
I mean, this is listed alphabetically, and it goes office supply establishment is 71016, 71017 is parking, parking lot and parking garage, 71018 is planned office development, and 71019 is public buildings and uses, and then it jumps to 71020 retail sales. So I don't, I don't see the printing services at the moment, but it could be tied up under one of these other uses within here.
Do you know where it's at, Ms. Wilkinson?
That's what I'm looking for now.
In the meanwhile, do you mind if me ask you a question? Mr. Mayor, thank you. Rusty, since this was a non-conforming permitted use for forty-plus years and since Mr. Wells' retirement, has it by virtue reverted to a residential zoning?
It is zoned R15, and right now it's classified as illegal non-conforming use. And under our non-conforming use requirements, if the site goes vacant for more than a year, then you lose that classification.
So they've lost that classification technically. If we don't make this change that is requested in the application, then it can only be sold as a residential.
Yes, it would be limited to the uses under R15.
Anyone else, Mr. Goode?
Yeah, Rusty, thanks for all the work. Since we are looking at changing it to OI, can you give just some rationale for why that's a good spot or acceptable location for OI?
This is a different request in the sense that you have an established commercial use within a neighborhood that's historically been used in a certain way for forty-something years. They're not asking to increase the uses on their property or do anything else. They're merely asking to bring the zoning in line with what the historical use of the property is. We've looked at that. We've tried to match that up. We've tried to protect the neighborhood by limiting access to Wells Drive. And in our opinion, the location of the property, the size of the property, the geometrical design of the parcel itself is pretty limiting on the property. So we feel that allowing the zoning with the two stipulations would be enough to protect the neighborhood.
Thank you, Rusty.
Any other questions?
I did find that. It's 71016 where it says office supply establishments, including accessory printing operations. I think that's what I was thinking, that's what that meant, but maybe it doesn't.
That's not full-blown printing operations. That's like a office depot or office supply company that has a Kinko's component within the retail sales.
So if, when the property is sold, would these, all these different things be options under the, if we, you know, unless we had some stipulations, would they be options for the owner?
Yes, all these uses would be allowed under the OI zoning district.
Okay.
Are they realistic uses? I mean, that's for somebody to decide, but at the moment, it doesn't appear that way.
But the zoning would remain with the property, though, I think, correct? Okay, thank you.
Rusty, the existing parking, can you pull that up again?
Okay. Yeah, the site plan's up, if they could pull it up on the screen for you. Yes, sir.
So how many, there looks like there's, how many, is that fourteen?
They have twelve parking spaces. Eight along that eastern property boundary, and then four directly behind the building.
If, if these were, would you consider any of these front yard, parking in the front yard or, how many of these spaces would be in the front yard?
Possibly five or six spaces, depending on where you start from the front face of the home towards Patmail.
But these are the ones that have been there forever, the existing parking?
Ms. Bush would have to probably clarify when those spaces were installed. I don't know if they were added over time or what, but being out there, they've been there for a while.
I got some pretty moss on some of them. I drove out there Friday, so. Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Martin?
Yes, I do. Rusty, I know that we said that this has maintained its use even as it's been, even though it's been zoned R15, but we really can't say, even if we do agree to zone it as OI, that any of these businesses won't come in and disrupt that community itself. I've had an opportunity to drive the area to see the house, and it looks residential. I would not have never known that it was a dental office. So are there any other conditions or stipulations that we could put there to make sure that that community is not disturbed by anything that might come in that would be more than what this dental office would, or any other office would offer?
I mean, ultimately, if the site was redeveloped, they would have to comply with all the city requirements, and they would have to install probably landscape buffers on the east and west side boundaries. Then they would be limited by stormwater management and then provide parking facilities for the use. And those are all based off the floor area of the building, so, and that building's going to be limited by the setbacks and height requirements and stuff like that. So, yes, they could redevelop it, and it could change, but once they decide to do that, they're going to have to come into compliance with the city's zoning ordinance, tree ordinance, and everything else.
Size severely limits that opportunity for redevelopment.
Yeah, I mean, it's under an acre, and then on top of that, we've placed a 35-foot undisturbed buffer across the back. And then when you add the 50-foot setback on the front of the, on the front along Patmail, that property shrinks pretty much, and it's a narrow linear property that runs from Patmail to Wells Circle.
Rusty, what does OI, what is the side setback under OI?
I believe, hold on one second.
Okay, thank you.
The side yard setback for OI is 15 feet.
Is that when it abuts residential areas? Because I thought I saw...
There is also a requirement for any new building to be, let me see, no building in a non, in any non-residential district shall be located closer than 50 feet from any property which abuts it. So if you look at this property, it's 115 feet from the east property line to the west property line. So if they had to meet the zoning standards, it would be a 15-foot wide building. If it had to be 50 feet set off the property line.
But I know, but once we, I mean, this building as it sits is, I think, I think it said 29 feet from the property line, so it already is closer than that 50 feet as it exists now, so.
It's a legal non-conforming building. The discussion is about if something new is built.
Anyway, I was just wondering what that would be. Thank you.
Rusty, I'm sorry, could you just repeat what you said there about the side setbacks and what allowable width building?
Okay. The zoning ordinance says OI zoning has a 15-foot setback, but if you're abutting a residential zoning district, the building has to be 50 feet from that property line.
Okay. So what's that, so what's that leave for the building width that's available without coming in for a variance? 15 feet?
Yeah, that's, the plan up here reflects 115? I can't read that, or maybe 100 and...
150.
165 or 145.
It'd be very difficult to build a building on that and meet the setbacks based on the residential setback.
So if it's 145, then it's 45 feet. If it's 165, it's 65-foot wide building if you're going to setback to setback. But you still have to meet access requirements for the fire truck, and they require 20-foot access, and then you get landscape buffers and everything else involved, and that, it shrinks down. So it's hard to base that off of, you know, what the maximums are for that.
And that's not what we're looking at tonight. We're looking at the existing building is going to stay there, and they're requesting it be rezoned to our zoning category, right, of OI?
Of OI, yes.
But once, so once it's rezoned, does the zoning stay with the property?
The zoning runs in perpetuity with the property unless it's changed by mayor and council through zoning request.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions, Rusty? Okay, thank you, Rusty. We'll hear from the folks that were sworn in. I assume you're Ms. Bush, if you'll step forward and tell us who you are and...
Mayor, I am counselor, I'm Melba Bush. I am Dr. Bush's wife, and I'm representing the property and my wonderful husband. My husband basically bought that back in 72, 73. It was, it basically had been a house, it's a frame chalet kind of building for about three months.
Ms. Bush, can you pull the microphone a little closer because I'm having a hard time hearing you? Okay, thank you.
Okay, now? Can you hear me? Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. And so he bought that and did plumbing and some electrical and has had it as a dental office all these years. And he has enjoyed every moment. I think he's dealt a lot of service and a lot of good for that area. We are interested in Smyrna looking good. We are interested in that community. No way, after all those years of practice and work, do we want to do anything to upset that community. I think that this building is wonderful for, be serviced for others, and I think it would help that community. And it is a wonderful building. It is great for parking. It's good for entering in and exiting, and that is no problems with backing out or any of those issues. And so I hope that you'll consider it, but basically, we are not interested in coming in with any real retail or anything on this area. We want the building to maintain its original structure and want it to be used for a blessing to other people.
Anyway, have you, Mr. Phil?
Mrs. Bush, thank you for taking time to come up here, and I thank your husband and you for the years of service to the community. I know that's important to the community, and what you've done is, by trying to maintain a service component to that, it's going to be important. it's going to be important for the future. You understand the dilemma we're facing because it is a non-conforming zoning from when you were back in the county before the property came into the city.
And I can understand you're doing your job, and this is what you're doing. But we, you don't really know us, but we do not want to disturb anything in that area, that community. We want to help that area, and I believe that this building is meant for a very special person, like my husband did. And it will give a lot of service and a lot of, because we don't, that's what we're here for.
Well, if we don't approve your application as this change requests, it reverts to residential. We recognize that. And so I'm in support of your application as it's submitted. I just wanted to let you know that and make you aware that that's important.
And it's always been, there's no kitchen there. It's basically, basically been used for business.
We had a question, or I did earlier. It's a A-frame.
Chalet.
Right. Was it used for residential initially?
It was for about three months. He bought it from Mr. Will Banks. And he had married someone from out of the country, and there was a problem in her family. So he quickly needed to move out of the country. So my husband had always been there, where the bus building is now.
Yes, yeah.
There on Concord. He was there in some, for about ten years, then he was in Oakdale ten years. So my husband's been, was in practice for about fifty-nine years. He worked till he was eighty-five and a half.
So he had it, it was a residential use, but then he had it converted for the dentist's?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Bush?
So I've talked to you a couple of times today, and I've enjoyed talking to you. And, and I shared with you some of the concerns that I have. And, you know, looking at staff's analysis, it does assume that, that after rezoning the property to O-I, the use of the property will continue in the same manner that it has been used in the past. However, when I read the, the zoning for O-I, in order to make that happen so that it does continue as a, a type of service building that has been in the past, I put down some additional conditions, and, and I just want to go over those with you and also with Mr. Carter. And I appreciate your time today. And so I know Mr. Martin mentioned the vehicular access to and from Wells Circle shall be prohibited. And he also mentioned about the thirty-five-foot undisturbed buffer shall be maintained along the entire rear of the property. Those, both of those conditions deal with the protecting of the neighborhood behind there, which own Wells Circle. But I felt when looking at the, the other things that could happen, there is also all residential there on Pat Mel on both sides, and also across the street from, from this property. Is, and it's in the county, but it's also residential. So, you know, one, the, the, so those two go with the Wells Circle side of the property. So the other things that I've added here, or I'm recommending, is any use other than those allowed by City Code seven-ten dot fifteen is prohibited. And that includes offices, including the following. One is offices of health service practitioners, including physicians, surgeons, dentists, dental surgeons, osteopathic physicians, chiropractors, and other licensed practitioners similar to those listed. Excuse me, I'm going to have to get a sip of water. Number two is other professional offices, including legal, accounting, auditing, engineering, architectural, and other similar in charact, in character to those listed. Number three is general business offices, including financial, real estate, insurance, manufacturers and sales representatives, and other similar in character to those listed, provided no goods are for sale at retail. Number four is governmental offices, including federal, state, county, and city. Okay, so that would be an additional stipulation. And then in addition to that, number, I would like to add that no additional parking be added to the front yard than what's already there, existing. And it, and the next one, if this property is to be redeveloped by demolition of the existing building, only one principal building is allowed. The, the size of any new principal building shall not exceed thirty-five feet in height. No monument sign allowed. No signs larger than three feet in height or width can be attached to any structure. Any sunlights must be turned off when business is closed. Business, business hours of operation shall be limited to between seven a.m. and six p.m. No existing trees on the frontage of the property facing Pat Mel can be removed unless they are certified by the city arborist as dead, dying, or hazardous. No additional curb cuts on Pat Mel Road. And then no front yard fencing is allowed. And then no fencing allowed within the thirty-five-foot undisturbed rear buffer. So those are the ones that I had, I'm recommending to add. And if you want to comment on those, you and Mr. Carter, that would be fine.
All right, that's, that's fine. We don't have any problems with this.
We had two folks that also wish to speak, I think. Mr. Carter, you, that says who you are. You don't want to speak?
I'm just here supporting Mrs. Bush. Answer any questions.
All right, we had, Ms. Bush, if you just have a seat at this, if you'll come up, tell us who you are, where you live at, and any comments that you'd like to make.
Yeah, my name's Gary Nelson. I live at eight-seventy-two Chrysler Avenue, which is in the neighborhood behind the property there. And I am opposed to the rezoning. I mean, I appreciate the, I've, I've lived in my house back there since the late nineteen-eighties. And I was in the county and got annexed into the city. And I appreciate the, the Bushes and their, in fact, they were paying taxes and this long and keeping the property up. But it would be the only property from the corner of Pat Mel down to Old Concord that would be an O-I property. And, you know, if you zone it O-I, you know, I don't know but what. An ambulance service company was one of the companies that was listed in there. And they'd, you know, have ambulances come, there's no, no telling what it could be used for later on as any of those O-I. And it would be out of character. The, the property goes from Pat Mel Road all the way through to Wells Circle. And it's large enough to build, to, to split it and make two homes in there, which would be a real asset to the community. We're trying to get the community turned around and building, improving a lot of the homes. Right now, that frontage that's on Wells Circle, it's an eyesore. It's just overgrown and trash is thrown out all in there. If it was developed as two residential properties, that would be the best use for that, that property. It would be, it would fit in with everything else, and it, it would, it would be a benefit to the city. It would be a benefit to everyone that lives in that neighborhood if it was re, if it was developed into two residential homes. And so I'm opposed to changing it. And I, I mean, I know office industrial would usually be able to sell it for more if it had that zoning on it. But I think that if you, if you built it into two residential properties, that would be the best use for that property. So, thank you very much.
But you understand that we're not, that's not what the applicant is asking to do with their property?
I, I know, I know. But I mean, you, you've done that with properties right there adjacent to it. There was the one property that you split, there's Habitat for Humanity homes right next to it and in behind it. And you have split a property already for two Habitat homes right there that, that comes right behind the Rush Truck Center.
Now, we didn't do that. We had someone that came and applied for a rezoning.
But, but.
And we approved that, so.
But if you, if you could put that, that photo of, of the, where it sits in the neighborhood again, you had up here. Yes, that one right there, uh-huh. Okay. You see, right there, the, the, the homes right next to it there, going down the hill on Pat Mel Road and on Wells Circle. Those are, if you split that property and put two homes in there, they'd be bigger lots than the ones that's going down the hill on Pat Mel Road. The one up there behind the Rush Truck Center, they, the city approved this, that one to be split into two lots. It had, it came, it came before council, and, and it would just improve the whole character of the neighborhood. Pat Mel Road and Wells Circle, and, and add a lot more value to, the city would gain a lot more value from that being done. And, and it's already zoned for R-15. And a developer could easily split that into two residential lots and build two nice homes in there, which would just be a lot better. Thank you.
I think that was all. Everybody that had been sworn in that, unless Mr. Carter, you just say you're just here. Okay.
Can I, can I ask Mr. Carter a question?
Uh, yeah. He's already been sworn in. Just, just tell us who you are for the record. Lawrence Carter, Mrs. Milba's, Milba Bush's agent.
I'm sorry, I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I know you and I talked a little bit today, and we talked about that residential option. And I believe you had, you know, you have a little bit of knowledge about that in terms of that property at this time. And if you want, I just thought maybe you could speak about that. And I know that's not actually what we're testing.
The possibility that it could be split into two lots. The A-frame house sits a little further back on that lot than, than the Habitat house sits that was approved. The other problem would be the topography of that lot going into Wells. I think most of you know it's on a hill, and most people don't like putting houses inside, inside a hill, so.
I apologize, Mr. Carter, but I didn't, I, I hear you're representing the applicant, Ms. Bush. But are you a real estate agent or broker?
Yes.
And any use that she agrees to sell to is what you're helping her with?
Yes.
But you have an applicant, potentially a buyer, potentially in play, that is, falls into this O-I category?
Yes.
Is that my understanding?
Yeah, we've got several people we've been talking to over the last.
Residential?
No, on, on the, on the O-I.
Because the neighbor asked that question, and he posited that it could be two buildable lots in the map.
We, we've looked at that in the past, particularly with Habitat for Humanity. I think Milba's actually talked to them.
Okay.
But there again, it, it's the development cost of the lot is, is very prohibitive for that price house in that neighborhood.
If you, if you put two houses, you would definitely have to cut down most of those trees in the front.
Oh, yeah.
Order to get the house, two houses on there.
Yeah.
And then it sounds like the, the existing building wouldn't be able to be used.
No, I, I believe it would be inside the setback line.
So you and I also talked about these conditions today?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and, and with what you have in mind in terms of the use for the property and the sale of the property, is the conditions that I, I talked about is something that you feel comfortable with in terms of that property?
Yeah, that particular building is a small office building. It is not one that is going to have a, a large Aspen dental-type building come in. A, you can't redevelop on that lot. It's, as Rusty said, it's, it's going to be too cost prohibitive to do anything like that because you're going to have to go vertical, if you can even get the footprint of the building in there, which is some, some serious question. And as you guys know, that, that's, that's a residential neighborhood. That's what the use needs to be. It needs to be a neighborhood office. And that's, that's who we, we've been targeting to. You can't have a construction company in there with trucks coming in. You can't have a bunch of traffic coming in. It's got to be a small office. It's got to be a chiropractor, a psychology office, stuff like that.
So, Mr. Carter, the question I have is, as this, this is reverting back to the R-12 designation, if we don't take this action tonight, would that impair your ability to sell that property?
Yeah, it, it's going to greatly diminish the property value and the sales value of it because that's what it's built for, and that's what it's known for.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carter.
Ms. Wilkinson?
Okay, um, thank you. So at this time, I feel, based on everything that we've heard and the discussion around the additional conditions, I feel comfortable moving forward with this, this item. I just want to reread this, when I make the move forward with the motion, I want to read these additional stipulations again, or conditions.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. We have an application before us. This would be an amendment that we'd be considering on the floor?
I think what she's doing is adding additional stipulations. I don't know if she.
That requires a separate action. Is that correct, sir?
But to be honest with you, we've never done this before. The council got this at ten minutes after six tonight, these fourteen stipulations. We'd never seen them before. And I think most of us were uncomfortable with it getting it that quick, so. Without having a chance to go over them, staff had not seen them, so. But I'll ask our city attorney. I'll see if he can pay the war.
Get out of it.
Yeah.
So what's the question? Is this amendment? Is this an amendment to what's pending? I, I don't think it's an amendment to what's pending. I, I think that, I, I think that, you know, there is some history. Nothing to this extent, but there is some history for you guys adding stipulations at the hearing? I think you've done that before, so I, I don't think it's. That's answered your question. I, I don't think it's, it's a, I, I don't think that this is a, that that would be an amendment to what's pending.
But if it's a, a proposed amendment that doesn't have universal support, does it require a separate action to, to perfect the original application?
Um, I think I understand your question. So I think the procedure, if I can read you guys, and for, after twenty years, I'm right about twenty percent of the time. So I'm probably wrong on reading you all, but if I'm reading you right, I think that you would be faced with whether to approve or deny this, of course. And then on, if you want to approve this, whether to approve it with these additional stipulations or whether to approve it with staff stipulations. So I'm anticipating that a motion's about to be made to approve it with the additional stipulations. So I think you, if, if that's the motion that's made, if that motion is seconded, you would vote that motion up or down. If it passes, it passes. If it doesn't pass, then another motion could be made to approve this with the two staff stipulations. I think that'd be the way to figure out a sort through this.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, let me, Corky Welch, who I just said was not going to be here, he just appeared when I said he wasn't going to be here. Corky, you got a question?
I do. A question of Susan. It, the, the fourteen stipulations that you have, one of them regards, or two of them regards signage. One limits it to a three-by-three sign on the building. The other requires that no monument sign. Does that allow them to put any signage at all on the, on the street itself?
I, I believe if we said no monument sign, but I'm looking at it like this is in, surrounded by residential. And to allow a monument sign in a residential area will take away from that.
So.
Are you flexible with that? I mean, I'm, I'm flexible if it's a smaller monument sign than what our ordinance allows.
I mean, I'm, I'm flexible if it's a smaller monument sign than what our ordinance allows, but.
I, I understand your, your reasoning behind it, but I, I think that some signage is, is reasonable under the circumstances. I'd like to see that modified.
Like you're talking about a monument sign?
We don't allow pole signs, so.
Okay, well, let's talk about that, 'cause I think our ordinance allows for a 32-square-foot monument sign, is that correct? So what would be a reasonable-sized monument sign for, to put in a residential neighborhood?
16.
In square feet, half of that? Okay, um.
Where'd you get that from?
Mr. Mayor, Susan, I appreciate the, the hard work to get this list together. You know, I not sure if this is the, the forum to debate specific conditions on the property. Seems like that's something that could be done better offline with staff, and probably to identify the correct ones, if, maybe they are all correct, but not in five, 10 minutes of conversation back and forth that will stick with and affect the value of the property. It's my, my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak?
Mr. Norton.
I, I know that Councilman, Councilmember Wilkinson has expressed concerns about this, what the use could possibly be, but I think we've heard from staff and others have explained to us why this cannot be, it's, it's not feasible to redevelop this property. And, and these uses are, are just not feasible. We're not, we're not talking about what that might be. As it's been said, there's been, these 14 stipulations have been sprung on us 45 minutes before this meeting started. It's not been gone, it's not gone through the proper process of being reviewed by the staff and by our legal team. If staff, we have a professional staff that's been looking at this for almost two months. It was approved unanimously by the Planning and Zoning Board. If, if the staff believed that this would have been, that, that there would be a negative use allowed, they would have put more stipulations on there. So I, I don't personally support the additional stipulations, I do support the plan as presented. With that, I yield.
Okay. Anybody else, I think everybody's, unless somebody wants to make a comment, Marilyn, you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate the fact that all this information, additional information has been presented, and and I think that there needs to be more consideration here with what has been presented to us. And if it means that we need to take more time to, to consider this, I think that that's the, the direction that we need to go in. And with that, I yield.
Okay, Ms. Wilkinson.
Can we table it after discussing it? Scott?
If you make a motion to table, then there's no more discussion.
Yeah, a motion to table it, seconded, would end it all, would end today.
Yeah, table it to a date.
But don't we have two, so we have two proposals, as you described in front of us, one with, with the additional stipulations and one without, if it, if it's defeated, correct?
But as of right now, there's no motion on the table.
Okay.
And what Ms. Wilkinson was reading changed from what we got earlier, there's, you changed some of the stuff in here, so.
Doesn't it change when it's voted upon? It has not been voted upon, so the original application is what's standing before the panel.
But when Ms. Wilkinson makes her motion, she can add.
She can, yes, she has.
She can add stipulations to the motion that the staff has already, you know.
Mr. Mayor, can I move to approve as presented by, as presented?
Well.
I'm asking, I'm asking a question.
I'm gonna say that the consideration should be given, anybody can make the motion, but Ms. Wilkinson, this is Ms. Wilkinson's district. That would be sort of out of sync with what we normally do, that person in that, in that district normally makes a motion.
This whole process has been a little out of sync, in my opinion.
Pardon me?
I said this whole process has been a little out of sync, in my opinion, the way it's been presented.
Most unusual zoning I've had.
Well, and I just wanna add to that, this, there's never been another one, I was told, that, where there is a business that's been operating in the middle, surrounded by residential homes. And when I asked for other examples in the city, they said that we've never had that before. So the whole thing is very unusual. And, and it's my goal in adding these stipulations is to, to help protect the neighborhood that is around there. And, and that's, that's the reason I, I put those, added those in here. I think that, I do appreciate the work that staff did, but I do think that the two stipulations are, were really just addressing the the, the neighborhood on the Well Circle side of the property and, and not on the, the Pat Mel side of the property. And I also, I wanna ask Scott a question in terms of the uses that could be, the ones that were mentioned earlier, would they be allowed if this was, zoning was changed to O-I when it's surrounded by residential? And I wanna add that the lot is .88 acres, which is a pretty good-sized lot. I mean, the hotel we just voted on, that six stories, is not very much larger than this lot, so I just also wanna say that. But can you tell me, Scott, about?
You're asking me if, if, if I think that, that with the zoning, that these other uses could be built, I don't. I, I think that the, the configurations of the lot, lot would prohibit these other uses that, that you mentioned here. Their parking requirements, their improved surface requirements, their building setbacks, their all kinds of other regulations that would apply to this lot, that in my opinion would prohibit this from being redeveloped into any of these, the things, which I think is why staff only put the two conditions on. It's not because staff doesn't care about the neighborhood, it's because staff looked at this from their professional, and Ken's nodding his head, and saw that as a practical matter, due to the other laws that are enforced just as much as the zoning, the property couldn't be redeveloped in any of these other uses, so, so that's the.
So will it hurt then to have these, these additional stipulations? If it, if it can't, if you're, what you're saying is true, would it hurt it to have the same ones on there?
I think that's a good point. And I would say that it's, it's a practical matter, it, it probably wouldn't hurt. I think though, as a, as a procedural matter, what it hurts is these kind of being sprung at the last minute without the opportunity to review. Like you've got something in here that said, no, no new building can exceed 35 feet. Well, I don't know how tall the existing building is, neither does staff. And staff didn't have time in the 45 minutes when we got this, between when we got this in the meeting, to go out and measure. You know, there's, so there's, will it hurt? That's the way it potentially could hurt, is if there's something here that's unintended by you, but unknown by staff because of the process and the way that these things were, were kind of dropped at the last minute.
Wait, hold on.
Well, we got, well, we got a motion on the floor to approve, so I, I need to, if there's a second, need to address it if, you know.
Can I please say something?
Just, let me, if, let's see if there's a second to the motion to approve.
As presented with the two stipulations.
That's not the motion that's on.
That's the motion I just made.
Yep, so we need, either you have a second, or you move forward with it, so if we have a second.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I thought you said that the.
Mr. Norton just made a motion, though.
Okay. Well, he, she.
It's.
To, to approve with, with, as presented with two stipulations.
He had announced that she, a tradition is, a procedure that we typically adopt, is that the, the ward representative makes the motion. She hadn't completed her motion, correct, and then you made that motion?
Right, I made, I made a motion, yeah.
So I would like to hear the motion from the ward representative.
We got a motion.
We have a motion on the floor, though.
We got a motion, and I.
Procedurally, I'm just trying to understand.
Okay, I got a motion, anybody second the motion, if not, it's gonna lie, it's gonna die for lack of a second.
So, so are you talking about my motion that's on?
He didn't make a motion. Councilman Norton made a motion.
I did move to make a motion with the, I did say that, you said we had a motion on the floor, I actually did say that.
I, I, you were going over some, I don't know that you made a motion.
I said I moved to approve with these stipulations.
Okay, I'm, you're making a motion now, right? All right, go ahead.
Well, let me just ask, can I, can I, do you mind if I just, can I ask the clerk? 'Cause I don't know, what, what do you, what have you recorded, what motion's on the table? So we have, was that seconded?
No.
Okay, all right.
So Ms. Wilkinson did not make a motion, she was going over the stipulations, she didn't make a motion, though.
So can you say a move to approve with the stipulations? Isn't that making a motion? 'Cause that's what I, I said.
Yeah, you, what I'm saying now is if you wanna make a motion to approve or disapprove, you can go ahead and do that now.
Could I please say something?
But you gotta deal with whether, I guess, you gotta make sure that, that the other motion dies for lack of a second.
I know.
It's already died.
Has it?
Yes, I'm already said that it died for lack of a second.
Okay.
Ms. Bloom.
This has gotten so confusing now because of the fact that it would have been sensible to have added maybe two or three things to the original O-I conditions and stuff like now, but 14 things later. I don't know what, what we're voting on and what we're not voting on. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Wilkinson.
Where are we at the moment?
I, I think it'd be up to you now to make a motion.
Okay. So at this time, I move to approve item. What number is this, I'm sorry. Gotten lost here with them. You know what, I don't even have the right one up here on my screen.
Well, it's item 28, 2018.
Okay, thank you, it's been changed now. Okay, thanks. Okay, so item 4B, 2018-512, public hearing for zoning request Z18-017, rezoning from R-15 to O-I for an office use, .88 acres, land lot 420-894, Pat Mel Road, Melba Bush, with the additional stipulations of any use other than those allowed by City Code 710.15 is prohibited. And that is offices, including the following. One, offices of health services practitioners, including physicians, surgeons, dentists, dental surgeons, osteopathic physicians, chiropractors, and other licensed practitioners similar to those listed. Two, other professional offices, including legal, accounting, auditing, engineering, architectural, and others similar in character to those listed. General business offices, including financial, real estate, insurance, manufacturers, and sales representatives, and others similar in character to those listed, provided that no goods are for sale or retail. Four governmental offices, including federal, state, county, and city. Additionally, I would like to say, no additional parking in the front yard. If the property is to be redeveloped by demolition of the existed, existing building, only one principal building is allowed the size of any new principal building, so I'm not referring to the, the one that's existing. Any new principal building shall, shall not exceed 35 feet in height, which is the height that is in a residential, R-15, or all residential areas, a 35-foot maximum. I'm, I'm open to a smaller monument sign, as Mr. Welch had mentioned, so we could limit that to 16 square feet, which is 50% of the size of a monument sign on South Cobb Drive. And no, and, and then the, the signs on the building can be exactly what the ordinance says. Any lights, any sign lights must be turned off when the business is closed, and the business hours of operation shall be limited to between 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. This is also taken from our, our zoning code in terms of the hours that are allowable to, for a daycare in a residential neighborhood. Those are the same hours that are allowed. So that's why I add that, it doesn't mean that somebody couldn't be there at their office working late, it just means the business hours of operation. And in addition, I think that no fencing allowed in the front yard, nor fencing in the undisturbed buffer in the rear, the 35-foot buffer.
That's your, that's your motion, and that's different than what? You didn't include everything, the additional conditions, right? You didn't include everything on your 14 additional conditions, right?
No, that's correct.
Mr. Mayor, may we hear from staff for?
Well, we have a motion, I think, if we're gonna continue discussion. Do we need a second to continue discussion?
What was your second?
Second. Now, any other discussion, go ahead. Mr. Fennel, have a motion by Mrs. Wilkinson, second by Mr. Blackman.
Go ahead. Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Wilkinson, I really appreciate your desire to protect the neighborhood and be creative in ways to do that. I just have a hard time accepting all the stipulations just in a short period of time without having staff have a chance to provide feedback, 'cause these will go in perpetuity with the, with the property. So not, I don't have a specific argument against any one of them individually, but just the content and the quantity in a short period of time, it's difficult to, to approve them. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, I concur with Mr. Gould's observation. While I appreciate attempting to protect the integrity of the neighborhood, as Ms. Bush said, she and her husband intend with this transaction. I also respect our staff and our planning and zoning team that we have selected and entrusted with a review process that was not able to be activated on these additional stipulations that surfaced just today. So with that, I'm gonna vote no on this motion and support the original Norton motion.
I've got one question about the hours of operation. You say that they're gonna be limited to seven, to six, 'cause that's what a daycare center is, right?
That is the hours that is in our ordinance for a, a business in a residential area.
I thought you referenced a daycare. 'Cause you're, you wouldn't allow a daycare center to be in, in this, in this zoning, right?
We have, we do have daycares in certain residential zonings.
No, I know, but this is, you're restricting the use to 710.15, right? And daycares are not in there, right?
Those are the uses that have been discussed in, in terms of the current, the, the use that's been existing in the neighborhood, in terms of offices. That's what, that's what that 710. Dot 15 is.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a clarification question? Just 'cause I know if this, if this passes, there's gonna be some questions from staff, so. So on numbers, you're number seven, that originally said no, no monument sign, but then when you went through, you said you were open to some kind of monument sign, and I don't think that issue's been resolved yet.
I think Mr. Welch pulled something out of the air.
That, I mean, but that was, when you went through the stipulations, that wasn't specified, so these guys need to know, I mean, if this, you know, that's, that's, that needs to be clarified.
Let me ask a question, Mayor, of legal counsel. If, if we vote no on this motion. If we vote no on this motion, can we bring a second motion on this issue?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't want to hamstring these people on coming back for a rezoning, I guess, so we can vote for another motion after this. That's all I have.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I've never seen anything like this, and I know that staff maybe can't recall a business being in between two residential properties, but I promise you, in the last 42 years, there's probably been one out there somewhere, as much as we have changed and redeveloped. As a matter of fact, I know there was one on Concord Road, where there was a real estate office next to the Marchmans and somebody else on the other side. So there has been situations where you've had issues like this, but, and I can't tell you when they got that rezoning, but it was probably about the '70s, so. Okay. Any other questions or discussion of staff? We have a motion and a second by Ms. Blackburn, and I... Since the list that we got has 14 stipulations, and we're not, we're taking some in and some out, I don't know what, I don't know what we've got really that, where you made the motion to what we hang our hat on. All right, we have a motion and a second. I'll ask all those in favor of the motion to vote. That's two yay and five nay.
Mr. Mayor, may I resubmit my motion to approve as submitted?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve based on the stipulations that staff had originally recommended. All right, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? That's approved, five to two, with Ms. Blackburn and Ms. Wilkinson voting next. So that is approved with the two stipulations. I apologize for any confusion, because I was just as confused as y'all were, so thank y'all. Item C, 2018-513, public hearing zoning request Z18-018 rezoning from R15 to R15 conditional for three residential lots, 1.136 acres, land lot 335, 572 North Thomas Lane. Kapish Patel is the applicant. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Kapish Patel is requesting a rezoning from R15 to R15 conditional for the development of three single-family homes at a density of 2.64 units per acre. The proposed rezoning will result in the renovation of the existing single-family home on-site and the development of two new single-family homes on either side of the existing home. The rezoning request was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board at the December 10, 2018 meeting, and it was approved by a vote of seven to zero. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning request from R15 to R15 conditional for three single-family units with conditions.
Okay. I see the applicant is here. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to, that would like any, like to make any public comment concerning this zoning request? This is in, well, Mr. Welch is here. So Mr. Welch, I'm sure he's going to get Mr...
Can I ask Rusty to come forward, please, and present this rezoning?
See if you can get this one straight, Rusty.
I'll try to speed it up as quickly as possible for you. This is a rezoning request from R15 to R15 conditional for the property at the corner of North Cooper Lake Road and North Thomas Lane. Just to give you a little history on the, on the property, the applicant had submitted a subdivision request to subdivide the property into three prop, three new properties, meeting the requirements of the R15 zoning standard. Those zoning requirements limit the property based on property frontage and lot area. And their initial design met those requirements, but they sort of had to gerrymander the back of the lot, so they went to the rear of the property and sort of created some crazy lot lines. Staff identified the issue. We told them, you guys meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, but the lot layout is not conducive to an appropriate use of the property, and will create maintenance issues and property line dispute issues moving forward. So we recommended that they come in, seek rezoning, not worry about changing the use, but just seek a variance for reducing the lot size on Lot 1 from 15,000 to 10,000 square feet, and Lot 2 and 3 maintain the 15,000-square-foot lot requirements. So this request is not changing the zoning. It is merely taking the zoning to a site plan-specific zoning that allows a variance on Lot 1 for lot size. So as you can see, the surrounding properties are zoned R15. This property will remain R15. It'll just be R15 conditional, which is site plan-specific. The surrounding area has a future land use of low-density residential. That will remain unchanged with this zoning request. Here is the proposed site plan. Lot 1 is the lot closest to North Cooper Lake Road and at the corner with North Thomas Lane. Lot 2 is the middle lot. The existing house has been parceled out and will remain on Lot 2. I think the applicant will answer the question. They, they have renovated that house, and I believe there, it's on the market to sell. And then Lot 3 will be a new house. It will be constructed. And then the long linear lot on the eastern boundary is the stormwater detention area. And we'll go through that with some of these fly-ins. The proposed minimum setbacks would be 35 feet for Lots 1 and 3, and 28 feet for Lot 2. The front setback of 35 feet is a requirement for R15, so they're not requesting a change for that. For Lot 2, 28 feet is based off the existing home, and the front porch encroaches from 35 feet to 28 feet on that lot. The street-side setback is 23 feet, which is the R15 requirement. The interior side setback is 10 feet, which meets the R15 requirement. And the rear setback is 30 feet, which meets the R15 requirement. This is the location of the stormwater detention facility. With this request, because it is a land subdivision, it's required to meet subdivision regulations, which requires a five-foot sidewalk with a two-foot grass buffer along North Cooper, Cooper Lake Road and North Thomas Lane. These sidewalks will be connecting the sidewalks on North Cooper Lake Road. With this request for the R15 conditional, these are the two variances that are needed to accomplish that. First is the reduction of lot size for Lot 1 from 15,000 square feet to 10,507 square feet. And then for Lot 2, reduction in the front setback for 35 feet to 28 feet. These are some examples of the homes they propose to build on, on-site. This is the picture of the subject property. The picture at the top on the left is the corner lot. The picture on the top right is the home they renovated. And then the picture on the bottom is the picture of Lot 3 and the, in the area where the detention facility will be located. These are pictures of the existing homes in the immediate area that surround the property. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from R15, R15 conditional for the three single-family lots at a density of 2.64 units per acre, with the standard conditions that apply to conditional zonings from Section 1201. They deal with the composition of the home, protective covenants for the maintenance of the stormwater facility, meeting, meeting the stormwater management requirements, underground utilities, traffic improvements related to the sidewalk, no burying of debris, and then landscaping requirements through the tree ordinance. In addition to these standard conditions, we're proposing some special conditions. Number 11 deals with the minimum setbacks that we established earlier. 12 deals with the minimum lot size of 10,507 square feet for Lot 1, and 15,000 square feet for Lots 2 and 3. 13 deals with the minimum driveway length of 22 feet. 14 is the requirement for the five-foot sidewalk along North Cooper Lake and North Thomas Lane. 15 requires a five-foot dedicate, right-of-way dedication along North Thomas Lane. 16 requires a seven-foot dedication along North Cooper Lake Road. 17 prohibits driveway locations on North Cooper Lake. 18 requires that the driveway location on Lot 1 be set back a minimum 50 feet from the intersection of North Thomas Lane and North Cooper Lake Road. 19 deals with trees during the development process. 20 requires a stormwater management facility to be located on its own lot. 21 ties the zoning of the property to the site plan submitted, and 22 ties the zoning of the property to the elevation submitted. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to Mr. Martin?
I do have one question. Rusty, the 28-foot setback reduction on Lot 2, that's an existing house, isn't it? I mean, we're...
Yeah, that, like I said, that's the existing house, and that's where the front porch is located.
I, I don't, I've looked at it, I've driven by, and, you know, I mean, I'm a little concerned about constructing the house on Lot 3 and how it's going to work in there, but I don't have any real issues with the, with the way it's laid out. It's a, you know, he's met all the requirements with the exception of the variance on Lot 1. I don't have any other questions.
They are currently, they would have to submit, of course, and go through the, the land disturbance process, and that's where we'll check hydrology and everything else that goes along with this.
Rusty, I have a question. The sidewalks, you're saying they're going to be five-foot, but you've got the two-foot buffer that's, now, are there other sidewalks that are already on that, on North Cooper Lake? And...
The sidewalks on North Cooper Lake will, I think there's existing sidewalks on North Cooper Lake that aren't to code, so they'll take those out and rebuild them to code, and then the sidewalk on North Thomas Lane will connect to North Cooper Lake. There's not an existing sidewalk on Thomas Lane.
Okay.
Any other questions to Mr. Martin? All right, thank you, Rusty. We'll hear from the applicant if you'll step forward. Scott, you want to swear these folks in? All right, if you'll tell us who you are and where you live and...
I live in King Valley subdivision in Smyrna.
Your name?
Kalpas Patel.
I mean, you're right, you've got that name right.
Yeah.
I did, you did a better job than I did pronouncing it, but, and you, you're the owner of the property, right?
Yes.
Mr. Patel, I know you, you have the property, and your plans are to redevelop Lots 1 and 3 in there as presented on the plat. It's pretty clean and simple. Is this your builder that's with you, or just another partner?
I'm the engineer.
I'm sorry?
Engineer.
Okay. You've, you've met all the requirements, apparently, of planning and zoning. Have you completed, I don't, you probably haven't completed the hydrology study on that site yet, but have? Okay. Mr. Mayor, I don't have any other questions. I mean, there's, there's coming two variants.
Well, I'd like for him to tell us who he is. He got sworn in, so.
I'm Mark Lee with Paul Lee Engineering.
You one of them, are you one of, you Paul's boy?
I am Paul's son.
Get out of here.
So it's good to see you guys tonight. It's been a while since we've been here.
Yeah.
Anyway, the, just a quick comment, the, the new layout that we're rezoning to makes the detention function much easier and sweeter and easier to do. It makes it much better for the overall project, because we did have some pretty wonky-looking lines in the back to, to get the original criteria to meet it. But this, this will definitely enhance the, the concept and make it easier to develop.
Mr. Lee and Mr. Patel, I appreciate you guys working with our staff to make that work within the requirements and stipulations so that it still works for you. So it's a clever solution, and appreciate the staff asking us to do that.
Any other questions?
Okay. Mr. Welch?
I don't have any other questions.
With that, I would make a motion to approve item 4C, 2018-513. That's a public hearing. Do we approve it? For the zoning request Z18-018 rezoning from R15 to R15 conditional for three residential lots on 1.136 acres, land lot 335, 572 North Thomas Lane. Kapish Patel is the developer.
Second.
Motion and second to approve this rezoning request. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Please vote. Approve 7-0. Item D, under land issues, zonings, and annexations, 2019-19, public hearing approval of a subdivision plat, excuse me, for 3943 North Cooper Lake Road to subdivide the property from one lot to five lots, 2.2-acre land lots, 336 and 385 at 20, I'm sorry, 3943 North Cooper Lake Road, Southern Realty Partners LLC. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Southern Realty Partners LLC is requesting approval to subdivide their property at 3943 North Cooper Lake Road from one lot into five single-family residential lots. The applicant plans to subdivide the property within the requirements of the R15 zoning district, so no rezoning is required. The subject property is 1.83 acres in size and is zoned R15, single-family residential. The Planning and Zoning Board heard the request for plat, plat approval on January 14, 2019, and it was approved by a vote of six to zero for the subdivision with a variance for the existing four-foot sidewalk along Reed Road. Community Development has reviewed the proposed subdivision against the requirements of the R15 zoning district. Staff believes the proposed subdivision meets the intent of the requirements. They recommend approval of the requested subdivision. However, Community Development does not support the variance to keep the existing four-foot sidewalk along Reed Road.
Is the applicant here? Okay, good. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this approval of a subdivision plat for 3943 North Cooper Lake? I see there is no opposition. Mr. Welch, we're glad you're back. So it's yours.
I think I've been here all night. Could I bring the applicant forward for a few questions, please?
What about Rusty?
I'm sorry, Rusty. I'll let Rusty present it first.
So here, I ask you to help out and I interrupt, huh?
No problem. This property is located at the intersection of North Cooper Lake Road and Reed Road. It's at the, at northeast corner. This is a approval of a subdivision plat. There's no zoning change associated with this, so this is going to be maintained as R15 and meet the minimum requirements of the R15 zoning district. Here's the proposed plat design. They are proposing to subdivide out the existing house on its own lot and then create two new lots to the north of that along North Cooper Lake Road, and there'll be access from that location. Then there'll be two houses to the, or two lots to the... Uh, then there'll be two houses to the, or two lots to the south. Uh, one at the corner of North Cooper Lake and Reed and then one that fronts completely on Reed. Uh, the proposed lot, lot layouts meet the requirements of the R fifteen zoning district. So they have a minimum, uh, road furniture eighty-five feet at the setback line. And then, uh, they each have a minimum lot width of fifteen thousand square feet. The hatched area on the eastern boundary is the stormwater management facility. And then the hatched areas that they're showing within there are some of the, uh, drainage adjustments that are necessary to get the water to flow to those, uh, detention facilities. Um, as, uh, Ms. Sattler Jones stated, uh, during the PNZ meeting, uh, the applicant requested to maintain a, the four-foot sidewalk along, uh, Reed Road. Um, staff is not supportive of that request. We, the, the city's subdivision regulations require everything to be brought up, uh, the city's minimum code, which is five feet and with a two-foot grass buffer. Um, so we're, we're requesting to maintain that, uh, five-foot requirement and put in the new sidewalks along there. Uh, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Patel.
Mr. Martin, you mentioned, uh, your disagreement with the sidewalk. What other sidewalk along Reed Road has been upgraded to the five-foot to be compatible with this new expectation?
Uh, none at this point, but this is gonna be connecting to the five-foot sidewalk on North Cooper Lake Road, which will connect to the-
But not on Reed Road. That's all four foot now.
This will be the first section on Reed.
Right, okay.
So is there already a sidewalk, a four-foot when?
There's a four-foot sidewalk and based on, um, based on what the applicant stated during the PNZ meeting, they had some concerns about going around a utility, um, which is sort of located, I guess if you put the plan back up there, it's sort of right on that lot line between four and five. However, typically staff, we try to address those issues by allowing them to bump their, their five-foot sidewalk into the buffer to go around that and then back to the normal stance. This, the, the four-foot sidewalk is really tight to walk side by side with somebody when you're walking down the sidewalk or passing somebody.
So will they, they would have to, I guess I'm just trying to understand if, with the vote and seeing what the, um, PNZ, how they voted. So, um, are you, are y'all recommending that that be changed to a five-foot sidewalk?
They're recommending that it meets the standards and that they maintain, they provide a five-foot sidewalk.
Okay.
The PNZ board recommended approval, but allowing them to maintain the four-foot sidewalk.
Okay, alright.
So if y'all make a motion, you make a motion to determine what y'all are approving, a four-foot sidewalk or a five-foot sidewalk on Reed Road.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, I sing you the applicant.
Yes, does he need to be sworn in?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless he's an attorney, I never have figured this out. They don't have to be sworn in, so. For the record, you wanna tell us who you are?
Yes, sir. My name's Whit Smith and I'm with Southern Realty Partners. Um, we're Marietta.
Thank you, Whit. Um, I, I, again, this is a, this is not a rezoning. This is simply a, a subdivision plat that we're, we're approving this evening. Um, but to determine the, the only issue that I seem to have is, is going to be the four-foot sidewalk along Reed Road. Um, I, I, I tend to lean with, uh, with staff in that I'd, I'd like to see this as a five-foot sidewalk. I have ridden this property and, um, you know, unless you can convince me otherwise.
Well, our main concern is the, A, it connects to a four-foot sidewalk. It, but the biggest reason is right on the lot line that, um, I can see it. But it's, there's a significant, almost transformer box right abutting the current sidewalk. And so if we made it five foot, we'd have to go around the sidewalk, I mean, around that box. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, we would allow them to go around it as opposed to relocating the utility.
But going around it, in our opinion, would, and there's also an existing telephone pole, um, several telephone poles. Um, and if you, if you, that are close to, I mean, there is, it's tight in there. And I don't, I didn't, I wasn't prepared, I apologize. I, I thought, I don't have a picture of it, but it's-
Are you saying a four-foot one you could work, that would work?
The existing one is fine, 'cause it's parallel with the curb and, and I would be fine with having it be five feet at the box and notch in. But our preference would be aesthetically not going around in a, in a kind of swoop around it. 'Cause it's a, it's not just a, it's a pretty big box, but.
Uh, now, I'm less rusty and, and, and you both, if you go to a five-foot sidewalk, are we going to have poles in the sidewalk? It's one of my pet peeves in life.
I can't really tell on this plat, on this plan right now.
Corky, what did you say? Have what in the sidewalk? Poles, okay.
I mean, if, if, if they're in the loca- It looks like the power lines are up close to where the property lines are sort of. I can't really tell on this. I can just see where, uh, the surveyor, the engineers highlighted the overhead power lines. And it looks like they're closer to the actual property line away from, um, the curb. So they would be going over the utility boxes there. I mean, we can make adjustments to deal with that particular section with the utilities. If it maintains four feet around, around that section for the six to eight feet to get around that utility, then, then that's fine. We're, but just keep in mind, you still have almost two hundred feet of road furniture from North Cooper Lake to, to, uh, to the Reed Road property line.
Okay, and, and then that, that will hook into an existing four-foot wide?
It would taper down back to four foot, yes.
So what are the chances of, of, uh, that four-foot existing, um, being widened to five foot?
Uh, I mean, that's, that's up to whenever the road improvements are made. But, I mean, you guys have sort of taken the stance that you're trying to improve sidewalks to and from parks and to schools and stuff like this. This property would access North Cooper Lake, which also accesses North Cooper Lake Park, which is to the south, a quarter of a mile or so. So we're trying to implement policies that you guys are asking. If you guys don't feel this is appropriate, then just make the recommendation for the four-foot sidewalk.
Mr. Mayor, I, I lean with my council colleague from, uh, from this area to try to maintain a five-foot sidewalk, but there are restrictions and stipulations sometimes like this. And I have expressed in the past my view about sidewalks and how we need to have a sidewalk fund that's fungible and allows us on those case-by-case bases, uh, to respond to very similar circumstances to this. If all the other properties on that street are gonna maintain a four-foot sidewalk and we're forcing this new applicant to go to five, there's value on both sides of the equation. One, your goal is to shoot for a five-foot goal, but in the meanwhile, you're, you're causing one person to have to go to the five and it's gonna connect back to a four and it's, it's a little confusing to the person who's walking on the sidewalk. If we had a sidewalk fund, then we could actually target that strip and widen everything to five foot and be consistent. And I'd like to see us get to that and adopt that because the policy that we've outlined that Mr. Martin indicates we're trying to adhere to is correct. But we have to have the funds necessary to dedicate to expand it. I have a neighborhood that I live in where there's a sidewalk down to a certain point, but we're not paving sidewalks throughout my neighborhood because every individual property owner has to bear the responsibility of, uh, allowing easement and the expense of that sidewalk to be erected now that it's already a mature neighborhood. Same thing throughout Bennett Woods. You're gonna have a hard time getting sidewalk after the fact to five foot.
Is, Rusty, is this, uh, this five-foot sidewalk, is this something that, have we established that as a council or is this?
This is in the, in the subdivision regulation. So if this was, if this was just a tract of land and they wanted to build a new subdivision, they put a road on there, they would be required to put the sidewalk there because they've subdivided the lots into a new, uh, a new community. So, um, we do, we just don't distinguish between that. So we're just trying to bring it up to new city standards.
I mean, an existing four-foot sidewalk, you probably never even know it if you, but anyway, I don't wanna get into our discussion on adding different stipulations and stuff. Uh, were you gonna say something?
I was just, I, I was just gonna say, I mean, our intent is, it's not, it's not the cost, it's the aesthetic look of the streetscape. I mean-
That's my issue too, is the aesthetics of it and I, um,
I mean, it-
I don't wanna see, but for one thing, I, I, poles and sidewalks drive me crazy. Um, and, and I don't know if it's gonna show up like that or not, but then we, we're gonna have a, a go down and we, but right now, we have a pretty nice sidewalk. I've, I've ridden out, I didn't get out and walk down the sidewalk, but, um, it's a pretty nice sidewalk. Needs to be edged, but y'all will take care of that when you build the houses. I'm, I'm, I'm prepared to-
We're, we're planning on ripping it out and pouring new because we have to. Um, along Cooper Lake, it's four feet. We would have to make that, North Cooper Lake, excuse me. And we're fine with it. It's just mainly the, the power box.
You know what you're gonna do? Sure, okay. Any other questions of, uh, the applicant or Rusty? I, I would hope that you're gonna let them work it out, let staff and let the guy building it work it out to where it'll, it'll look nice.
I am, um, going to make a motion on item four D, two zero one nine dash one nine, a public hearing for the approval of a subdivision plat for thirty-nine forty-three, thirty-nine forty-three North Cooper Lake Road to subdivide the property from one lot to five lots, including two point two eight acres, land lots three thirty-six and three eighty-five, thirty-nine forty-three North Cooper Lake Drive, uh, with Southern Realty Partners LLC are the owners. And this motion will allow for the four-foot sidewalk to remain.
We have a motion and they-
As I get to the screen.
All right, we got a motion and a second from Mr. Phil. Any discussion?
Yeah, can I ask a quick question? Uh, when you said allow the sidewalk to remain, do you mean the exi, you mean the size to stay four feet? Are you, do you anticipate them putting a new sidewalk in at four feet?
No.
Or just keeping the existing sidewalk?
Keep the existing sidewalk a, along, uh,
'cause they-
North, along Thomas, is that, excuse me. Along, what's the side street, Thomas?
Reed Road.
Along Reed Road as a four-foot sidewalk. It's existing and, and will, will allow for it to remain in place.
But he says he's gonna check it up and put a new one four foot in there, right?
Oh.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, what your, your motion would not require a new four-foot sidewalk. It'd allow the existing four-foot sidewalk to stand. Is that what you intend?
If, yes.
Okay.
Um, are, are you planning to replace the existing sidewalk?
I, yeah, I mean, basically, yes, sir. That is the correct answer.
Okay, but you're looking to replace it, it as a four-foot sidewalk instead of a five-foot sidewalk. Is that what you're saying? I apologize. I misunderstood that. Um, I, I still don't-
It's the older sidewalk, I mean, it, it's part of the landscape. It, it, we want it to look nice to be able to sell the homes.
New homes need a new sidewalk, Corky.
I'm sorry?
New homes need a new sidewalk.
Uh, it's a pretty nice sidewalk. Um, I, then I am, I'm gonna let you and staff work, work through it. If we, if we can get a five-foot sidewalk in there, I'd like to put a five-foot sidewalk in there. Um, if, if, without having the deviations and poles in the sidewalks and something that looks like this going down through there. Uh, but I make a motion to approve, um, the item and let you and staff work out the details of the sidewalk. Just for the inconvenience.
Motion is second. Mr. Phelan made the second. Is there any discussion? Are those in favor of the motion? Hello? Anybody not voted? Who we waiting on? Okay, just came up seven. That's approved seven zero. Uh, that's, uh, I hate to see that property go. This old Parker Norton property, um, it's been there for years and, uh, but we get some new neighbors and stuff, so good luck to everybody. Not a whole lot of two point two acres. Item E, twenty nineteen dash twenty-five, is public hearing zoning request, Z nineteen dash zero zero one, modification of approved zoning conditions and building elevation. Seventeen point seven seven acres, land lots one sixty-eight and one seventy-eight, thirteen sixty-five. Veterans from Oil Highway, Brookside Lake Manor, Taylor Morrison of Georgia LLC. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Taylor Morrison of Georgia LLC requests modification of zoning condition number five from Z dash one four nine Cobb County to eliminate the requirement of a two-car garage for each townhome unit. The applicant is requesting the stipulation be modified to allow for one, a one-car garage, uh, for the internal units. The zoning proposal will not alter the existing use of the property. Community Development recommends approval of the proposed zoning amendment with conditions.
Uh, is the applicant here? Been sitting here all night. Um, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this modification of the approved zoning condition? At the record show, there is none. This is in Mr. Phelan's jurisdiction. Mr. Phelan, if you can, you can do a record and get this right on through.
Yes, sir. I'd like to ask Mr. Martin to give the update on when our first entreaty to this property was brought, just about a year ago.
Okay, I'll jump straight to the, the background and everything for you guys. Um, basically, this property was annexed into the city from Cobb County, uh, back in two thousand, uh, two thousand fifteen. Uh, originally, this property was rezoned in, uh, in Cobb County and I believe two thousand six. Uh, they obtained a development permit in two thousand seven and the property went dormant and, and laid vacant for that time period. And then in two thousand fifteen, uh, they annexed into the city. Um, and since that time, we've completed, uh, they've completed their, uh, in land disturbance permit installation of infrastructure and are now building, um, some of the units out there. Uh, I think they've got seven that are completed and twenty that are under construction. This zoning amendment, as Ms. Sattler Jones stated, what is applying to, uh, basically the building elevations and allowing them the use of a one-car garage as opposed to a two-car garage, which is part of the zoning stipulation that was, uh, required by Cobb. We'll go through these and, and, and I'll show you. Uh, these are the seven townhomes that are completed, just to orient you with the site. Uh, these are the thirteen units that are currently under construction. And then the zoning change will apply to the rest of these units, um, which is essentially a hundred and thirty-six units. Just to give you some perspective, these are, uh, the exist, these are the completed units, the seven units. Uh, just give you some building elevations and what they look like. And these will now be the proposed elevations. Uh, so they plan to maintain a two-car garage on the end units and then have the flexibility to do, um, a one-car garage on the interior units of the building. They will maintain a two-car, um, parking, uh, parking driveway or driveway. So in net, if they go to a one-car garage on those interior units, they're going from four total available parking spaces down to three. Um, this change also deals with, um, the building elevations and building heights. The, uh, the original units were a three-story product, so they had three distinct, uh, building stor, uh, stories. This is going to be a two and a half story- This is going to be a two-and-a-half-story product, so you got two, two floors, and then the third floor is built into the roof line of, of the townhome. Um, the one-car garage will allow them to, uh, move one of their bedrooms down, down to the, to the bottom floor and have just the master, uh, bedroom on the top floor. It'll also allow them to move their entryway from the second story down to the first story and have a foyer down there. Um, as they stated in their application, this is to address market changes and allow them to address, uh, different, uh, household types within the market that may not necessarily need a two-car garage and may want to, uh, provide additional floor area within the home. This, this is the subject site, as you, you see it today. Um, picture on the top left shows the, the completed homes, and then the homes that are under construction, and then top right shows you the community, uh, facility, the pool and cabana, and then the rest are the, the lots waiting to, to be developed. Uh, community development is, uh, supportive of the requested change. With that, we're proposing modification of the wording, um, to add a minimum, uh, one-car garage and eliminate the word "two" from the, from the zoning stipulation. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Martin?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, the, the, uh, picture that you show, showed of the elevations, um, it had sev, uh, seven units in, in it, do any of them have seven units, or?
Yeah, they have some buildings with seven and eight units, but the zoning was done through Cobb County. When they annexed into the city, we just carried over the zoning Cobb had, had done.
Okay, um, and then, do you know how many units that will, uh, affect with the, the garage reduction from two to one, to one?
Uh, that's a better question for the applicant. I think there's 23 remaining buildings on site. Um, so if, I guess, I don't know how many total units that will equate to, but-
Okay, all right, that's, that's good, thank you.
Let's hear from the applicant, if we could, please.
Step four, tell us who you are and why you've been here for over two hours.
It's okay.
You don't want yours? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, Rusty, you did a good job presenting what we got going on here, but, uh, Taylor, I'm sorry, I'm Brandon Richardson with Taylor Morrison, I'm the Director of Land Development. Um, TM is asking for this waiver to construct townhomes, uh, with both one and two-car garages, creating a very, uh, streetscape and more diverse product for the consumer. Uh, with a consumer group segmentation, the one-car garage is more appealing because it opens up home affordability, um, the single-person homeownership, it captures the potential millennial buyers, it allows an apartment renter to, uh, move into homeownership, it also allows, um, green space in front of each one-car garage, which we presently are not, um, having on our existing, uh, infrastructure that had the mid-level entry and the two-car, um, garage opening. Uh, that unit is all impervious area for the entire front scape of the, uh, townhome. Um, it also decreases the impervious surface area, the area, thus reducing the stormwater runoff. Uh, last but not least, it reduces the amount of overall ownership traffic in the community. Um, with that, I'll take this time to answer any questions.
So, just refresh everybody the number of units that you'll have for sale in the complex.
We will have a total of 136, which translate to about 124 potential one-car garage units. And just, uh, let the record be straight, this is, uh, we will, we will build this, and if, of course, if it sells, we'll keep building it, but we will also, um, go with the market, and if it doesn't sell like we intended to do, we will start building back the two-car garages.
So, you might be back?
You never know, yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions?
Question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you're, so you're going to do the rest of them all, one, uh, with one garage?
The outside units will be two-car garages, and all the internal units will be one-car garage, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and it looked like there was like three inter, three internal, and then the two outside, is that, was, was it five?
Five.
Or just four?
What do you, I'm sorry, ma'am, four-
Okay, when you, when, when you have the, um, layout-
Yes, ma'am.
Is it five?
Buildings, or five units per building?
Five units?
They, they vary, they go from, we have a, a five-building pack, six-building pack, seven-building pack, but the outside units will be, always have a two-car garage, and then-
I think you're, uh, you're gonna regret that move. I really do, and I am a broker, so I do, I do, so I do know a little bit-
It's, it's a hit and miss, you're right, ma'am, but it, it's the millennial, it's, it's opening, uh, a different consumer group, uh, segmentation. It's just a different avenue for customers.
Well, yeah, but, okay, I, I understand that-
Yes, ma'am.
But even millennials have friends, friends with cars and cars-
Absolutely.
And you name it.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, we are, in the one-car garage, we're still doing the two-car driveway, so we are still giving the, the full driveway of a two-car garage.
Well, good luck.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fennel.
Uh, since 2006, when this project was, uh, initiated, uh, it's gone through some ownership changes and some, uh, shift in strategy, and I get that, and I appreciate you investing in this project. When is your anticipated, uh, I, I don't wanna say build-out date, but that's what I'm asking for. How, how's the market right now?
Market is very strong-
Strong?
In that, in that community, our pace is, uh, running at about 3.4.
Okay.
Um, so we could potentially be out in, uh, three years or less-
Your lips-
If the market keeps going. Right now, we're in that stagnation period.
We look forward to all those residents-
Yes, sir, thank you.
Coming into Smyrna, and I appreciate your commitment to take up the cudgel and take it across the finish line.
Sir, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have no further questions, if, if it's okay, I'd like to move approval.
Yeah, but I'd love for you to make a motion.
I move approval of, let's see here, uh, 218-511. Is that right? No, 219-25, that's the public hearing. Am I looking at the right thing in here? I'm looking at the wrong one, here it is. 2019-25, uh, public hearing, I move approval of the zoning request, Z19001, 17.7 acres, Taylor Morrison of Georgia.
Motion, a second by Mr. Welch. Any other discussion? Although some favor the motion? Six-one, Ms. Wilkinson votes in the negative, it's approved, thank you very much. Uh, item five is previous licenses, we have none. Item six, formal business, we do not have any. Seven is commercial building permits, we do not have any. Ms. Jones, if you read the, uh, consent agenda for council's approval, we are getting close to going home, so.
The consent agenda reads as follows, approval of the, item A, approval of the January 7th, 2019, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the January 7th, 2019, pre-council meeting minutes. That's, item C, approval of the January 3rd, 2019, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item D, appointment of Frank Martin as a permanent member and Kevin Moore as an alternate member on the license and variance board. And item E, approval to use council chambers for Crete Wood at Viennings Annual HOA Meeting, Sunday, February 24th, 2019, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Do you hear, motion to approve the consent agenda? So, move. Motion's second, although some favor the motion. It's approved seven zero. Committee reports will start tonight with Mr., uh, start tonight with Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Finance Administration, uh, will be having, uh, the process start for the FY20 budget cycle, and on the city's website, you will see an engagement process that you can, uh, go online, look at our budget process, and you can opine on some of the issues that we're dealing with, and look at all the numbers. We have more than you can sit for an hour and, and stand, but, uh, we, uh, pride ourselves in having a very transparent process, uh, the fact that we've earned AAA bond rating and have consistently, uh, kept our milligrade flat and ke, kept our budget in a surplus condition is something that we have a great deal of pride about, but we wel, welcome your input as the process begins. How are you, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, hey, this past Saturday, uh, the Campbell High School Athletic Department put on Dancing with the Stars Smyrna, uh, the first annual, and our own Marilyn Blackburn performed and did an outstanding job, uh, and our mayor, of course, is one of the, one of the, uh, judges. Uh, it was a really great event, raised $30,000 for the athletic department, uh, it was sold out, 600 people, I believe, and, uh, just really a well, well-run event, so Dr. Walker at the high school should be proud of her staff, who, uh, put together a wonderful, a wonderful night. Um, secondly, the next business partners meeting at the high school is February 13th, and the business partners is an opportunity, it's a group that's an opportunity for local businesses to come together at the high school, learn more about the, uh, the activities, meet some students, and get involved in the high school and be able to support the various programs. So, if you have any interest, come, come meet Josh, Vice Principal Josh Ford and Tammy Johnson, and they will get you connected to a, to a group. And with that, I yield. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wilkinson.
Yes, I'd like to just comment on, uh, the event the other night too, on Saturday night, it was a lot of fun, and, um, I was just proud of Marilyn for entering the, uh, the contest or the dance, Dancing with the Stars, along with some of the other people in Smyrna, um, Officer Louis Defense also did a great job, and, and it was a lot of fun, and I'm also, uh, happy about all the money that they raised for Campbell High School Athletic Department. Um, also, I, um, was asked by the library director, Mary Moore, to make an announcement about an event happening at the library. Um, the event is, are you interested in starting a nonprofit, or do you currently manage one? Learn to make your organization future-proof by attending the upcoming free workshop, What Successful Nonprofits Do to Succeed, at the Smyrna Public Library on Saturday, February 9th. The workshop is from 2:00 to 4:00 PM and will be led by Cheryl Smith, CEO of Duland Capital Partners. Seating is limited, so please reserve a spot by emailing sreference@smyrna.gov. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Corky Welch.
Very important announcement, beginning the week of February the 4th, 2019, a new routing schedule will be active for your sanitation pickup. Um, I, I've already got mine in the mail, I don't know if everybody else has it or not, but, uh, uh, you, be sure and open your mail from the city because it has your new schedule for picking up your trash, and, um, I'm sure that we're all gonna get some phone calls about sanitation, people didn't pick up my trash today, so, um, pay attention to the schedule, make sure you're out there on the right day. With that, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Marilyn Black.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, I want to send out a big welcome to our, um, new employees, to the city of Smyrna, Adam Colette and Tazia Sueda, Sueda, Castillo Flowers and Carrie Lewis, welcome, welcome, welcome. And, uh, we're, uh, once again, I want to say we're excited to receive the Safety Liability Grant from GMA. Um, also, I was very excited to be a contestant in the Dancing with the Stars Smyrna, it was such an incredible, um, experience and an event. I think I've moved parts of my body that I'd never moved before, I'm still a little sore, but I'm gonna be okay, but it was wonderful. Um, we sold the event out, which was great, so I know that next year it'll be even bigger and better. It was very interesting to see our own mayor over there, um, as a judge, I don't know what you were doing over there, Max. And that's what he was doing, he just kept shaking his head. So, um, but it was really wonderful, and I just want to say thank you to the community for coming out and supporting, uh, Campbell High School, that's gonna be great. I know that you probably have seen some of the NFL flags that are, that have gone up, not inside the city, inside the city here, but they are in the city limits, so that means that the National Football League is coming to town, y'all, that's Super Bowl time. So, there's going to be lots of activity that's going to be happening, please be careful while you're out there, but do get involved, have a lot of fun, and, um, they're gonna have a lot of activities, I think you can go online to nfl.com, I think is what it is, to find out all the activities that are gonna be happening in the, um, Atlanta, and they have some that are happening in the Smyrna area as well. I want to also send a, or say a big thank you to, um, the Turner Chapel, uh, for an incredible MLK celebration that they had on Monday. It was very nice, I appreciated it, I want to thank all of the residents that, um, who joined me at that MLK celebration as well. And then always excited to see my constituents out there. Ms. Pat, it's great to see you, and of course, Mr. Leonard, wonderful to see you, I think you probably have some exciting news to share with us that's coming from the, um, Sustainable Smyrna Group, so, uh, let me think. And with that, I yield.
Uh, Ms. Andrea Booster.
I don't really have anything to say, I, I didn't, I, uh, made the mistake of getting a shingle shot on Saturday morning and spent the evening and the next day with an ice pack on my arm, so I didn't go to the, to see Marilyn dance, but I'll do it next time. Anyway, have a good evening and thank you.
Mr. Derek Norton.
No report this evening, thank you, sir.
Ms. Tammy Jones, um, Mr. Scott Cochran.
No, sir.
Ms. Terry Graham, Tina. Uh, I was just gonna say before we, um, the person that won the Dancing with the Stars, I'm trying to pull it up without, um, it making a bunch of noise.
Eric Kamensky.
Yep, Eric, and his partner was, uh, I don't know, somebody that could dance, it's, I, I watched those that weren't supposed to be able to, but, um, so I was watching Eric, and he, they knocked it out, they were the last, um, contestants to, to dance, and I don't know what happened, but there was other people that were right there at the, close, but then they got a, a 410, so it was, it was great, it was great, it was a great night. Show call series that we have, we don't have anything, Citizens Input, Leonard Robinson, 1809 Teasley, Sustainable Smyrna. Sorry you had to wait.
Oh, I enjoyed every second of it.
Well, you're the only one.
Who, first of all, Happy New Year, 2019, I can't believe it's 2019, that means I'm gonna be a year older. And Mr. Mayor, City Councilmember Staff, Sustainable Smyrna Group, to enhance our knowledge in sustainability, we have an exciting speaker, we're gonna get the Monica Brown from Thissen Krupp Elevators Sustainability Department, and she's gonna come down and talk to us about sustainability. Now, Thissen Krupp, they're building their headquarters over there by SunTrust Park, they're gonna have several hundred jobs, they're planning to incorporate several small businesses, and they're really image, image-conscious about sustainability, so they're gonna come in and talk to us. It's gonna be this Thursday at Chris's Caribbean Bistro in South Cobb, and City Council and staff and friends and family, you're, you're invited to come in. As usual, we keep the meeting short, to the point, and there's a lot of good food, of course, you gotta pay for your own meals, but a lot of good food there, so you're, you know, my invitation and Councilmember Blackburn's invitation to come down and listen to Thissen Krupp talk about the exciting future sustainability that they have for the surrounding and community that includes Smyrna. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
6:30, 6:30, this Thursday at Chris's Caribbean Bistro. All right, thank you.
Patricia. South Cobb Drive, yep. Patricia Burns, 10 Concord Road, Smyrna, Importance of Smyrna Vision Plan.
Good evening. My name is Pat Burns, I'm a 30-plus-year resident of Smyrna, so I've seen a lot, from a swastika painted on the Indian Cultural Center to the First Baptist Church once offering English-only classes, or, I'm sorry, English-language classes. I've seen St. Thomas Catholic Church become the largest church in the dioceses- I've seen St. Thomas Catholic Church become the largest church in the dioceses and witnessed a once rundown downtown turn into a trendy destination. Every January, like you, I am filled not only with personal resolutions, but also I've decided to make resolutions in my community and for the improvement of my community. Every January, we are on the cusp of February's Black History Month. It's the first of many heritage months celebrated throughout the nation. With joy, we celebrate the city of Smyrna with Jonquil festivals and the nation with the Fourth of July festivals. And warm weather brings the arrival of food trucks on Tuesday. However, it appears as we're so busy celebrating things, we often overlook who we are. Fortunately, Smyrna's vision plan guides us by stating, Smyrna will be known as a city that celebrates its diversity. Pure and simple, a city that celebrates its diversity. We have the money, we have the time, we have the energy. Let's not ignore or make excuses, especially financial ones, that heritage festivals are not important to a city that celebrates its diversity. What message does that send to our children and especially our teenagers? Your children and teens. And let's not forget your leadership legacies and goals. In the past, Smyrna has boldly and swiftly come up for money, come up with money for a new downtown and moved to purchase tired apartments and businesses. While my white face and flat voice is an unlikely champion of heritage festivals, the foundation of my family is multicultural. One of many colors, different sexes and a plethora of interests, investments and faith. I am a thread in the tapestry of Smyrna. In conclusion, do not unravel the vision plan, but instead look forward to what we can offer all of our citizens and residents in Smyrna. We can really extend ourselves as a welcoming community. Thank you very much.
That's the last speaker that we had that signed up to speak. No other business, I'll declare this meeting adjourned at nine thirty-two.